The only thing I have is, I think Steve has got the copy of the contract. It's called the Flock System, F L O C K. It's a camera system that's to be put up in different parts of the county. Uh, once we get one camera put up, it gives us access to the surrounding county's cameras also. Uh, it will be great on getting tag numbers for different vehicles on anywhere in the county where we're putting up. Also in different counties.
How many cameras do you apply for?
We need one to get in the door. Uh, it doesn't cost us anything. Businesses are buying the cameras and it's a annual fee. So it doesn't cost us anything. They just need y'all's approval to approve the contract, I guess.
Where are, where are we these cameras from?
In Newton County.
I can understand. They don't want to tell your neighbors what they're gonna put them, because then they'll know where not to go.
I can tell you that they will be in high population or high traffic areas.
But the county's not buying these cameras?
No, no.
But we have to sign off?
Approve the contract for us to be part of it, yeah.
Now, these cameras are monitored by who?
By the sheriff's office, by us. And by any, for example, let's say we had a break-in in Newton County, and that truck was spotted, say, passing Walmart Forest. Well, Walmart Forest got a camera put up over there. Well, all we, since we're in the system, all we do is click in and say, we're looking for a white Chevrolet four-door truck. And every white Chevrolet four-door truck comes through there, it will show you that picture of that truck and tag number and everything else.
That gotta have been written, huh?
So the right, the right person can monitor every camera across the United States?
Yes, whoever, whoever's in this system, yeah.
Whatever agency we're talking about.
Correct, but you gotta have one camera to get in and get your feet in the door.
I'd like to be brother to me.
So moved.
Help me find a fellow broke into a house.
So. All in place? All opposed?
I'd just like to find somebody that throws tires out, Joe.
Me and you both. Me and you both. Got a good idea who it is? That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yes. Well, we did get on, I think I sent all y'all a picture of it. We got a pretty good, uh, drug bust on the interstate. Two, as a matter of fact, one bottle of cocaine and the other, I can't remember exactly how many. There's three suitcases swam full of marijuana, so.
Two arrested?
Yes. That's all I have.
It was a final destination.
You probably need to go too. I'm down here in your office with nobody.
Hmm, okay.
Okay. So you done what?
All right, uh, as y'all know this, if you don't know, this past year was one of the worst years I've ever had. And because of this, I've had to make a hard decision. And I'm gonna have to get tired or razzan. I'm gonna have to nerve it now, I can't even get that beat down. And, ah, I can't do what I'm supposed to do. It all started August the second. I had back surgery, where the back surgery went bad. Before I got out, I come down with COVID. So instead of staying in the COVID floor, I came home to recuperate. Well, two weeks later, uh, I started having, I was walking back and forth to the mailbox doing good. About two weeks, it starts where the pain was so bad, I couldn't, I couldn't move, I couldn't do anything. It's just like my legs, it's like you catch a big charlie horse crap, and it's still like it's just crushing your bones through your legs. So I, I go back to the university. They admitted me that day and test after test, good Lord. But I come down, they recognized it as Gymboree. I've never heard of it before in my life. My wife's a nurse for forty years. She said, she remembered it's a nursing school. This is the first case she's ever seen. And it's the nerves attacking itself in the body, and I was paralyzed from my waist down. I've been in, uh, physical therapy, methods rehab for two weeks, and then I've been over here for four months now. I'm back to walking, but any kind of uneven ground, I, I can't do going up a hill. It, it's all I do to get up it. And I thought about, well, I could stay home, do the hospice calls, and let Rebecca do the other. That ain't fair. But even just like this past couple of weeks on a hospice call, just walking to the house, you almost fall. And then a couple of cases we've had where you've got to move the body, well, most of them nowadays ain't very small. I, I can't pick up over twenty pounds. I can't move them, I can't transport them, and it kills me if I do try to do something. I mean, it, I love doing what I do, if you can say you love doing that, but, you know, I've enjoyed it, and, and I hate it, but I, I, I can't, for myself, I can't do it anymore. And I, I put on there like the end of March. And, and for reasons for that is the state, when it's retirement thing, they say it could take up to ninety days for your papers to go through. Well, that also give y'all time to appoint somebody, or if you have to send them to school, maybe they can get them in school before then. I know you'll have to have a special election, or they can do it in the November election, I guess, if they had them one then.
I believe, I believe it's happening.
Have we been six more?
That's what I thought too, but I, I, I don't know, but. Now, Rebecca's already certified. It'd be up to y'all to appoint her to fill in too. You can have an election, or if you wanna appoint somebody else and get them set at the coordinate with Jackson, I work hard on to get a school coming for. I talked to the medical examiner's office, and they said they would need a letter from y'all of who you're gonna appoint, 'cause they can't take anybody unless y'all say it's okay for them to get. But y'all, I, I'm sorry, but I, I, I can't do it. And, and it hurts, and I thought about it a long time, but I, I just can't come up with enough time. And I appreciate everything y'all done for me over the years, and I know I've been a pain in the butt a few times, but, y'all been behind me and I appreciate it.
We appreciate you, you down, and we understand you.
You're certain.
You know, like I told George a while ago, but I went back to my evaluation, but they say it's probably as good as it's gonna be. And even if it does get better, they say it could take up to three years for I'm back to, if I can get back to where I was. I guess if I get to see y'all from now on, it'd be on a personal basis.
George is gonna buy a daycare present.
And I, and I've tried to get the five departments and Joey and all have been excellent about helping me, but, you know, there's only a certain amount of people that will, that will help you. Couple of times I've been stranded where they, they won't, 'cause they can't. And it's just hard, you can't always depend on being in the right circumstance that I can do it. So I hope y'all understand.
I do, I thank you for, I thank you for letting me on. I understand, nobody knows what we're gonna face before we leave this world, and, and I feel a long way from that, but nobody knows about help. And I hate it that, but I don't know when he could accept his recommendation, and he's gonna stay in March.
But can't accept, can't accept this regulation, he's staying, so we actually can't do the thing to.
To March.
I didn't know how they get on, I didn't, I had to give y'all a letter so that, so I had to come back in March first, or let you in.
We can accept it in March.
Okay. All right. No, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay, continue to input then.
I'm trying, it's just a long, slow process. But it's still in getting out of doing dishes and life.
Should've had that doctor put in in that.
He did, but my wife didn't.
She didn't accept it. I, I'd like to say something before we leave. First of all, my friend, I hope you get better. I appreciate the job you have done. It's a job that I wouldn't do, and, uh, I've been on a lot of calls reading, you've been a professional, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I'll try to do it.
But get better, that's the main thing. This job, this job, don't get your health, you got one shot at it, buddy.
You have to attack.
Yeah, that's how my wife and drive it.
Good luck.
Yeah. Well, thank y'all.
All right, Mr. Mike.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
What is Ray Rushing have a house in Miami?
Um, I don't remember the rest of the address, but, yeah, he, uh, it was one of those that he did some, um, exterior work on.
Didn't work on inside. I, it was just, just walked in the lake, up on the top.
I don't really know him, but what happened was he came in and filed homestead last year, and he had more than one parcel. We didn't put them together.
So you had them as.
We just had to add.
I'm ready to run.
You gonna have, the, the next meeting, it, it's gonna be some, you know, what we get on that homestead stuff. They turn sixty-five the one year, they forget to come in five. This morning, I think, when I'm at five, where they got the bills this year, and they should've been either exempt or lower, because they didn't five, but they oversee that. And then Scott came in and did his, and you know, we make his ritual, he got his hundred percent B A D.
God, Smith.
Smith. So his will be in there.
But his is on, on, on military side.
Right, right. It, it, it's homestead, but it's, it's for military.
Right.
And this, this, um, Croft and Wyatt, this company, Ken is.
Guess I'm on the.
And that was.
Those two just worked up.
Yeah, that, that was one of those kind where, you know, when your children, you say, oh, I'm gonna be in my house right here, but you don't ever fix the deed, and you be in the house there. We've been napping it per occupancy the whole time, but it, it wasn't right, so that they finally fixed the deeds and made it right.
So moved. Ready? All in place?
George, you got one right.
Yeah.
Just like Joel's truck. One sixty-four.
Yeah, you got it.
Senior citizen garbage dealer, one sixty-four.
Same mine.
Senior citizen garbage dealer, one sixty-four. One eighty-eight for that.
All the amount.
Yeah, same amount.
David, we were talking about Robbie and Kevin them riding the roads and looking at nine-one-one addresses and getting all that information to you. We talked about how many households we had that should be built for garbage. Do we, do we know that number? Does anybody know that number?
Do we know, should we know their number?
I said, I got you a five thousand. Just checking. Well, that's what.
They know.
Six thousand seven hundred eighty-five.
Six thousand seven hundred eighty-five.
Thousand.
Yes, that's the billing.
So we got an increase.
Say it again, Jack.
Seven, eight, five.
Six, seven, eight, five.
No, it says four thousand. But that's enough.
I know.
Way up.
Weren't we talking about that fifty-five hundred?
No, it was forty-eight hundred or something, wasn't it?
Fifty-five.
So still twelve hundred left. Something count. So the census basically might work the paper wrote up.
They're riding, it's showing that there's not as many households as we've been having gone down.
Not as much down, well, that's right there, ain't nothing.
Not what he's done down there. He said they've picked, they've deleted more than they've added.
Yeah, that's not, that's not accurate, 'cause that number would've went down.
Y'all didn't hear Caleb say that?
I did hear him say that, but he just told you that, 'cause that don't show it.
Yeah, but those changes are not. They hadn't got that to Three Rivers. We still paying probably for twelve, fifteen hundred more than we should be paying to send bills to. I think it's probably where we are here. You hadn't received anything yet, have you?
Well, uh, only just the, the, the update part that they do when they write.
But I mean, they're not through?
No, no, I don't have anything to flip.
No, no, they're taking that, they just haven't got everything up there.
Oh, I didn't know there was the rap, so.
Well, it was supposed to change it to last meeting, said they like just living on fifteen, they're gonna get us that date. What's it say, I don't. Do you know if it did or not, Steve? Have you talked to them?
The last, no, that's the last I heard too.
No.
Well, I just got my sound on, but we wait. And we're hoping they're gonna.
When did you, did you get them on?
If we found out.
Oh, wait a minute.
If Three Rivers is billing that, then Three Rivers knows or could give us how many of those are under sixty-five and how many are over sixty-five too, right? I want us to somehow in twenty-twenty-two know within ten thousand dollars what we should be collecting in garbage takes.
For a year.
For one year.
Once you get the real number, whatever that is.
Like I said, in twenty-twenty-two, I would love for us to be able to know that number.
Yeah, I might tell, good luck.
But how they gonna distinguish age, age bracket?
Well, what if you put that in, it's on the system, you can do that. That's, that's not.
If y'all put it in, I'll have.
Well, I don't know how Three Rivers does it, but on my homestead, I'm gonna give you that on my homestead. We can go in and pick out what we have. Uh, we can run a program, and it says I got fifteen hundred of these and forty-five thousand of these over here. You see what I'm talking about? So I, I would think, and I'm not a computer person, so I have wrote no program, but I would think you should be able to go in there and, you know, do a query and, and get that part. That's on me, that, nobody told me that.
Well, it's separating them by the amount on the bill, so they should be able to split it that.
That's my point. If, if they're sending the bills, and the bill is a hundred and sixty-four, does that.
No, well, now, you know, they didn't put that on there. That's what my nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand calls is about.
Oh.
They didn't put the amounts on there, they just put forty-four and fifty.
Yeah, I didn't.
Nothing was on there, that's, that's, the call we get was the same every four to a year.
We're gonna say four times fifty, or four times four.
No, it's not that, you know, you're getting your twelve dollars, so you get one sixty-four or one eighty-eight. If you do forty-four times four, you paying over. You, you saving your twelve dollars.
Oh, by paying annually, yes, yes, yes.
And that's what we encourage, to pay annually.
Yeah. Okay.
So if you pay annually, if enough people pay an annual, that would help you on the side of cost of building.
Correct, 'cause you're not.
You're not building one time a year.
Do we know that they're gonna?
That's what I'm just trying to tell folks, pay that surgery in December or January and be done with.
That'll have both sides, that'll have.
It'll save you twelve dollars, and it'll save them several hours looking at a computer and choosing the same name every time.
Same, same, same. Yep, we could've been paid with that garbage truck, give it first of the year. Okay. All right, thank you, man.
Hope y'all have a great day.
Hey, well, I come by, y'all might be.
Okay. Okay.
I need space.
All right, you too.
All right, we need to rehire Beaton County employees. So moved. All right, nice going through that too fast. Let's calm through this sucker. Let's give each one a. He ain't doing it right, cut him out.
Who's doing the sec?
That's Moses.
I'll put yours most review. Do you have a motion?
No, I'm like a motion real. So. All in place? But I do wanna add something to that. All right. The department heads from this point forward give us a recommendation on what kind of employees we got in each department, and we need to remember that at Ray's time.
Oh, I come in. Okay.
Two seconds, Mr. Monk.
Right here.
Can you spell that?
J U E.
The Joe? We'll start with right down, Joe.
Uh, that's bad hair, so I'm starting to nod here. County engineer is nodding here.
You can handle the rest of that later on, I'm gonna do Steve.
Hey, you can go ahead. All right, the length of Justice Court files, November twenty-first through December twentieth, five hundred and forty-three dollars and forty cents was collected. American Municipal Services collected eight hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents for the same period. Two hundred and fifty-six new cases were opened, uh, fines of an amount of seventy-four thousand twenty-five cents were levied. One thousand one hundred and one dollars was collected from the new cases, and there were thirty-six dismissals for the period. Are you buying the garbage truck? Jackie, Marty said that you were.
I was, I mean, I don't know the price or whatever, but I was like, see what I could do about getting gifts. What are y'all? What are y'all? We. At least I'm used to buying, but what I need to pay? I mean, what does it work?
I don't know, if we can't get a razor hand, you go out there and get it for a dollar.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but I mean, I don't know how this works.
Kind of ask a question. What you gonna do with it?
I'm on, I got an old international dump truck, and I keep putting moving the dollars in. I'm gonna get the guy and send in there to put my bed, P T O and all on that, use it as a dump truck.
The P T O was on that truck, won't work or?
They could probably use the P T O. What model truck is it? Twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand miles. It's a ten-year-old. Can you act?
Is it single or twin?
Single. You know, and if we need to do a little work, I can do it next week, just, just don't worry. I mean, I, you know, while you buying it, getting started, we're getting a good truck, I just don't know. I don't know the price, it's how you don't wanna fuck with it. I mean, somebody throw a number out there, we'll talk about it.
I have no idea. Maybe they're out of, you know, I don't wanna try to hold nobody up. We use it in the county, but it's gotta be a respectable figure.
That's right.
That's the only thing, I say, uh, and I wouldn't have a clip, so if you get, if you can get some numbers together, Jackie, uh, so, you know, somebody could get a look at it, if you had it, we had that dump.
Marty was supposed, Marty was supposed to get somebody to look at it, he, they wasn't giving nothing.
Marty said ten thousand.
That's what Angie N M said.
That's what he said, that the garbage truck was worth.
I was gonna say ten, well, it's, it ain't got a lot of miles, it's got a lot of wear. I mean, that's, you know.
Is that, is that the one that hit the corner of the bike?
Yeah, but hit your one, the John's truck.
Oh, okay.
Well, the bed, can we sell the bed off of?
I think we did on that truck.
No, 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 it's got a bed on it, I don't want the bed.
Oh, it's the one that still got the bed on back. Can that bed be refurbished, or is he saying what worth it?
Marty said they could take it off, and they wanted the slides off of it, and, uh, I said, we'll sell the rest of the scrap that is no good for anybody.
Not good for that.
Have, have, have we possibly had the folks out of Baytown look at it to see?
We, well, I've called and called, and they, uh, never came, given us a front. Ten thousand dollars, you pay that for? Do I get the truck or the bed and what, and how's that gonna work? Well, Marty needs it. Man, I'm gonna have to take it to my barn to get it off, then I was gonna move that bed, you know, when I'm looking at it.
Marty was saying that they could take it off at the landfill.
With that loading? That's the way he talked with me about it, but okay.
I asked about slides, he said they could get them off, and I said, what about the body? He said they could get the body off, he said, I'll load her.
Y'all do ten grand for the truck, do it down.
I'll do it.
I'll, in fact, I'll take a two motion, all right, ten thousand.
The, uh.
All in place?
Yeah, I just, the bed needs, we need to do something with the bed, get it.
We need to find somebody that, I mean, Marty said like the main subjects had just been repaired. About twenty-five hundred dollars, so.
I'm, I'm really surprised that the packing man folks wouldn't, wouldn't tell them, give you a look something for it, just to rebuild it.
And we could do it though. Well, the sides, I was quoting, have them decide to get, if you had to go and rebuild both sides, you can build a new bed for just a few thousand more than that. So, I mean, it's, you know, that's what, when, when, uh, Richard was still here, we was talking about that one truck, well, it's our company here. You and Charles, I remember this, it's the same side, it got so thin, and the packing man told us to rebuild your new bed about him. It was like ten, eleven thousand dollars more, I think, than patching that one. All right, and this same deal, I need to declare that little international dump truck, I got to, do, I declare it surplus bin, and I'm gonna rip it down, I'm gonna pitch it, try to sell it, if I can get anything.
Yeah. Do you have a number?
It's that international dump truck.
I got two things.
Do I need to wait to do that next week? Can you do it right?
There you go like that.
Okay.
Two seconds.
I do. Well, I declare, I'm making a motion to declare that international dump truck. Steve, Steve, get me a number. I'm probably gonna send it back to the shop, run it, so I don't need to do that just yet, but I take you that, I think I might get a dollar or more if I can run it. If that, if I can get it running, give a five. If I can get you to take it back over there. Yo, my cracker, man.
Hey, holler.
That's right.
Hey, holler.
All right, yeah, we'll hold it on that thing.
All right. I need a motion to approve voiding payroll check to Todd Brown. He left it in the washing machine. We had to reissue it for one for a hundred and twenty-four dollars, Steve.
Uh, your motion.
So moved.
So, all in place?
Stephanie has requested that all parts of employees be placed on direct deposit, because we keep having problems with this. We lost checks and damage checks, people not cashing. So would y'all approve making all parts of employees go on direct deposit?
If we're back to that same deal where I think I've got a couple of, we even have a bank account, so.
We've got the, we'd have some that have cards that don't have bank account. They loaded on card.
What, what kind of problems do you have? What, what kinda problems you having with?
People losing checks or destroying checks or not cashing.
Well, that's one incident that, that rock down there, people lose it.
We got some that not cashing them.
See, that, that there will be a bigger problem than losing, we would actually another, but if you just ain't cashed it, then we hold it back for nine days. Books gonna get, told anybody, if we go back to that, you're putting it on a card, well, I mean, that's, I think some of our part-time people is, is the ones that was quickest to say, no, I really don't want it, wasn't it? So, I mean, this is basically, we gonna, we forcing them, and, but I, I guess they could quit, go work somewhere else.
It's strictly after you, she was asking.
Depending on help, I mean, again, you got, help ain't jumping out of trees no more.
That's what you got. I wanna make it convenient as long as I can, I wanna, also wanna make it convenient for our payroll, our people that's having the analysis.
Give, give us a, a couple of weeks to check with, with those employees. I'd, I'd like to do that, brother, just.
Just leave it. Now, I don't have any part-time, so we. A lot of time, all.
All right. We'll check back this time. Uh, your reverse auction, we got the specs for trucks, I need y'all to approve advertising for one or more new twenty-six thousand gross weight single axle, one or more new fifty-six thousand tandem axle dump trucks, one or more new sixty-six thousand tandem axle dump trucks. It's specs to be approved at the meeting on February seventh, and the reverse auction will be on the meeting on February seventeenth.
So move.
I wanna find out a little bit about it. Is this updating our contract, or what are we doing here?
Yeah, since they changed numbers, she said they can't alter that contract anymore. Cause it changes your weights, it changes, uh, something.
Model numbers.
Yeah.
Price, one way or the other.
Yeah.
All right, and what if you got trucks on the way now? I think you're good, you're good.
Okay, I just.
No, you got that twenty-six thousand kind of, most big here sometime this year.
And that won't change anything till like the truck Kenny still has?
No, well, I still got it.
It's going forward on new purchases.
It says new purchases.
That truck that I got? I was told it's something sold within a month, dollar. I.
How much?
I told him, no, it's.
Oh, like, with data.
I, the, the, probably from the menu, yeah. That probably get one nine and one nine five. She asked me, she said, you wanna sell yours, I said, I should probably share, but I just gotta buy none of them, but.
That's what I meant.
Which they say, you don't, they don't. Yeah, I, I'm good with that, y'all wanna go outside the boat.
You had a motion, so I can, I had all in favor.
I, I do, yeah, we're good, I, I just wanna share with everybody that I had learned that our medium D trucks will not work with the chipper.
I'm too sure.
It won't work.
Yeah, give a little.
And then you go back to put twenty-four five tire on.
I don't think that's gonna clear it either.
I hope, I think that would move it. That's why I was saying I get the meeting, you, so even running twenty-four rubber don't, won't pick it up enough?
I don't, I don't think it will, too, but I.
That ain't gonna need yourself, it.
Just about an inch or four.
I think you need about four inches.
Cause it won't go a quarter of the way like it is.
So.
Yeah, we might need.
Rebecca's gonna fix it.
What's the, without the hitch?
Yeah. No, it ain't the hitch, it's not no room between them, you know, the.
Back where you dump.
You dump it, your body gets your chips first, it's rough.
Yeah.
Well, I might, I might not leave out of you, man.
All right, Mr. Lee.
Uh, got a state holiday Monday, January the seventeenth. I don't know if it's the same cow we're burying or not, but we have a certificate in here on Jimmy Jones' property on Aaron Lou Surin Road.
Squad?
Aaron Lou Surin Road, Jimmy Jones.
Yeah, I buried a cow.
Does it say?
One?
Cause they'd sent in another.
Yeah, we already done one.
I buried two.
Okay.
All right, so second.
We just make sure the person, they. Should've ate the first one. And, uh, we just.
All right, I need a motion for travel for county officials and supervisors to go to Midwinter Conference in Flowood, January eleventh through thirteen.
So move.
Thank you. All in favor?
We have, uh, a grant, this is a non-competitive grant from DEQ, it's twenty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and forty-one cents. This is what we've been using to pay a portion of solid waste officer's salary, you wanna apply for the same use?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Than one of others, as far as that.
Yeah, that's, uh.
Okay, that's good.
I'll make that motion, yes, we want to.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, county employees scholarships, we've got two deadline, this is the applications, it's February the first. I told y'all last week, viewer, uh, let the optional show bar expire. The Stevens Institute will be here tomorrow for a work session on redistricting, and I gave y'all a plan that Mike and I had been working on, they'll be here at one o'clock tomorrow. Steve, back to page one, did you miss that flock thing on purpose?
No, it's been, I mean, I joke with them all. And we can make the most in all. On the flock.
Probably Ben wrote it over here.
Word is, he may. It was me and Kenny.
And then we did the rehire employees, I think that's it, other than y'all's election. Presentation. We got one employee changed, Jimmy Snow, Beaton Four, just nineteen thirty-three to nineteen ninety-three now. Hey, Lennae Kay did say to remind y'all, it's starting today, if you go to the hauling, uh, you're gonna have to get two quotes, only thing on.
Haul one.
Everything.
Anything, wrong.
Anything, yeah, only thing on state contract is number five and six, and seven eight, and a rip route. So.
So, number, number four is not on there?
Uh-uh.
Oh, I, I need to talk about that in a minute, if y'all ain't, if y'all hauled any big rock lately?
No.
Number, number four is the old number five, so I'm, I'm hauling number four now, number five, it.
Yeah.
It, it'll be.
Number seven?
It's just a little bigger than number seven.
Vault?
Mm-hmm.
They have them?
They got, they got it then, two, uh, two weeks ago, and told me Friday on the phone, wow, we found, it looked like a truck stop down there.
So y'all have to get quotes now?
It's not wrong.
Except by, oh.
You got, you got, you need to get.
Five and seven, it was like.
But it's a, okay, what's the shit?
No, it ain't, call Vulcan and Delta, both of them.
Soren on there, I don't, Volbert's are not on there either.
We're gonna get close to those.
We gotta get quotes from Volbert's.
Let's all shoot down that truck.
We can't buy them. I think they're on there for the highway department only. So, any, anything, any commodities y'all normally been buying, we, we take bids, so.
We take bids now, though, if we want to, yeah.
Take bids anytime you want.
That's the bad side of taking bids, it's like, they don't have what you need.
Well, actually, I own this, I own this mill last time, though. I mean, I wish we could go in and pick just rock and covers, and do bids on them and everything, I mean, do yearly bids and everything else separated out, that's the only two that's really gonna be a problem, is your limestone and your.
You can, do anything you want.
And signs. Limestone, covers, and signs, we'll take yearly bids on them, everything else, it'd be easy.
You can do that.
Well. Vulcan stays out all the time, and Delta's got it, was Vulcan there?
I'm there, I'll, Delta, I'm there, where's that?
Old Mary Creek, concrete place, I don't see you to fill that with you. But there above, where you get the trucks load the gas and all. But, uh, uh, put. Load your steel.
Get back to your span.
The truck's full. Oh, hold it, ten thousand.
Where is this year?
All craters. All right.
So.
Where we?
When, when I send the requisition in for five hundred tons of number seven, it's number seven, I think you said it's on there, make more than number four, will Lana make a call or email, send an email and get a quote, how are we gonna handle it?
If, if it's on state contract, you ain't gotta do anything.
Number four is not.
Number four is not, so she's gonna have to get quotes. She said you need to let her know beginning of the week, cause what you gonna haul any that week? I guess first thing, y'all, we find out who got it.
That's true. Well, Vulcan's not, I've been calling them the last week, so I ain't got an answer.
They got crusher on.
Yeah, and crusher on.
Got them all, that's five, our old five. Yes, same thing with Vulcan. Vulcan, Vulcan, I don't know if you pay any attention, I turned number five, I'm gonna buy that deep. You put it on a road, just giving you trouble? First night, just mad, slammed out of sight, if you can put that four, which used to be the original size of number five, I'd have called out of mountain, asked them, let me change the size, well, they done it for state, but anyway, number four's what we used to buy for number five.
That's why I put nine sixes to Matt, we, it went to five, that is, it's gonna decrease the size.
Yep.
But though number four's worth good, because I had some lockers, and that's what they put in there, and I don't have it.
Tightened it up.
Yeah, I don't have no problem with that.
You put that on there.
I have a problem with it when you start bleeding.
Well, hold on, I got care for that. That crusher run, like you put on that light type of gun, go in there, put you loads of number four, let them get them hauls, blade it up time, too, and put you about that much of it, crusher run over top of it, and put it out of your mind, and you can go to something.
I can show you where six trailer truck loads of number four, put on.
Go.
Well, you just need to put crusher.
It's raining down in China somewhere.
Yeah, they had a rough, rough, wet year.
Well, I liked the number six, where you can log it, but it, when you start packing the summer line blade and stuff, it'll kick up on.
See what you done, but I know what you mean.
It's gonna be some of it, but you can't fix everything, every problem that comes up. So, do you wanna bid yearly bid, rock, covers, and signs?
What was that, there in courthouse up here, we didn't take bid on supplies and stuff like that?
You can take bids on anything you want, whenever you want.
Now, he's saying, what did they do to the courthouse, since we didn't take yearly bid?
It just means that she's gotta get quotes on everything, and then if y'all do a big paving project, or everybody decides you gotta haul gravel all at once, you know, we may have to take bids. I think he's talking about cleaning supplies, that kinda stuff on your shop?
Yeah.
No, we, we don't, we don't ever take bids.
Okay, well, I thought we did on roads and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Oh. Well, that's all I know, try it a while, if we don't, we go back, if we can bid anytime we want, so we go back to bid. Bid process.
I mean.
I have a plan. I, I don't know how much that's gonna put, Lennae Kay, we get five hauling different sizes at different places. I mean, I, it's gonna put her calling more.
You really, I don't care, man. You know, because of that very, mm, bonus, that's hard seeing, like, but you right, especially double her work. If state can help to find loopholes, I would, we could be.
Chad Wike, Chad.
Well, I won't be, I'm, I'm telling everybody, I don't wanna be straight up about it, whatever, I'm like, you know, hunting a loophole, I just don't need to be in the hole. Say, we might want to, here to be, if we don't, you make some square field paperwork.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
So.
All in favor? Before we take a bid, have a think. I guess, cause if you start splitting them out.
We're gonna take on minutes?
We're gonna make it. Be right back where we were.
Yeah, no, let's don't, let's don't do minutes. Where we were just about anyway.
Don't do minutes, cause that's, that's something we need to haul all the time anyway.
Say, you don't know when that's like.
Yeah, that way, you may go a year without getting.
Rock, clay gravel.
Rock, clay gravel, signs, covers, whatever. Um, uh, a motion? Oh. What if we use all regular basis?
A motion on state contract, you? Yeah, it is. So we're gonna take bid on that.
Okay, but, yeah. What if we use gas, or get you a lot of?
Pest control.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if you're using a bid on that this year.
I hope we don't, I hope we don't, this high.
That's why he was. Contract, he said, so you talking about hurricane?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, let's don't put milling in there, and let's don't, and don't put crushed concrete in there. Cause I, we maybe fix a bit, fix a good.
Right. We'll take care of that. So, we taking bids for, we have something.
Bids for rock.
Clay gravel.
Signs, covers, roadside spraying.
And pest control for buildings.
Roadside spraying, we gonna get that in the contract, like you do and we do.
Yeah.
Okay. Roadside spraying, and then, and you got pest control, too?
Mm-hmm.
Does that, we can do it either, we gonna get a price on the chemicals, and then spray?
They say, we do pest control for all buildings.
Oh, okay, that's what you're talking about.
Me and Kenny's talking about, one year, we got, me and Kenny got all our roads sprayed by saying, well, I did it this year, last year, but then I went back, since I already had trouble, and I figured then, I could save a little money, so I sprayed myself.
Did you save any money?
Mm-hmm. Probably won't this year, I'll probably get Ken pro to spray, cause I'm, I'm just, pray didn't look at the number, or what is it, awful.
That's what we might need to get a press, man.
Contract? You put that on that?
Yeah, okay.
We're probably not gonna give you a press.
That's what I'm.
He gonna give you a day press, that's what I think.
We gonna do right away spraying, we need to, working on that right now, we need to do it in a month.
Well, we, he's gonna put on, you're gonna be.
Well, about in between time, I guess you'd get two quotes, go ahead, buy. We can get you about thirty thousand, or something.
Yeah, but then, now, what's my statement, yeah?
Well, that's one of the waters.
So, we taking, since we taking bids on rock, we just don't, we have, don't have to specify, but we just buy it in front of you.
Well, really, don't, we'll get taken on the number four, cause others is on state contract.
Fifty-seven, no, I didn't, you don't usually pitch seven.
I don't.
I do, okay.
That's always you.
Yeah, I mean, that's right, but I've done that because you couldn't get nothing there. Yeah, four, six, sixteen, and fifty-six.
Is on the state contract.
Yeah. Seven, okay, seven, eight, and eighty-nine.
Just till June?
I think that's for June.
This year's gonna go past June, I guess, we gotta do a mile.
Well, if, if.
State will do a state contract.
Do new contracts in the year.
Now, because, no, that don't matter, they don't have it.
Cause I don't think they gonna have it.
You probably wheel, you probably on the rock that play gravel, and the signs, you wheel on the signs and covers, I mean, you know, that's about six companies out there doing that, but.
I need the overs, so.
All right.
It'll be a while for you to get them.
That's why I need there to.
I've been trying to buy plastic covers for my personal business for two months. Ain't got them yet.
They deliver to us.
I had five, uh, I ordered ten, October the fourth, I had five delivered last week.
Or fifteen? Yeah, and I, they dropped, there's six that I have ordered off at the bar, and I, I figured those other would belong to you.
Probably why I didn't get ten, he got, he got my other five.
Hi, fellas, where we at?
Political speeches.
I'm about ready to speak.
I guess, I guess.
It'd be a little point, that's a pretty test. Just a second.
You're gonna get way out of your way.
Gee. Oh, mute. Y'all are clear, sir, a little bit.
We starting rolling back tomorrow or not?
I think so.
Brad, how you doing?
Doing good, how about you?
Good, man.
I just, quick, quick hook change, just like what.
Yeah, well.
Obviously, church and.
I just unplugged the mic while we're in recess, so. Oh, we unplugged the mic?
From the reason is, he's praying, when he might, somebody might hear.
Charles is getting a little questionable there.
He had a good.
Had good intentions.
See, I called her, lay after a question on, right, for one of my employees that ain't eighteen thirty yet, he, he'll be there, he want to know what his retirement will be based on, fifteen years and eighteen fifty-nine.
Back in session.
Cause the last four were for getting built based off of.
Yeah.
He should be above that by the end of fifteen years.
So he planning on working through?
Well, that's what he trying to make sure, he want to know what his retirement's gonna be, cause he's got a lot of potential to go to the job, and pay a lot more money, but ain't that high. So he trying to figure out what's gonna be sixty-two on.
Twenty-five years, it's gonna be based at fifty percent of your high four years. So if he's making eighteen fifty for four years, y'all, twenty-eight fifty percent of that.
It's gonna be about eighteen, nineteen, or a year.
I see it, there'd be nine twenty-five, nine, he said eighteen fifty, you basically, I don't know.
So what's the deal with fifteen?
Come on down, big boy.
Do you want my?
Yes, sir.
Why, you guess I'll be doing this?
Oh. Yeah, I'm thinking of no. I got over three thousand, no, still think it could be thirty.
Really?
Okay, you know. I mean, nothing but. I'm just saying.
Right. Right.
I mean, it'll be two point oh oh, one point. It's bigger than thirty percent, thirty percent of them, I wish you saw a plate for it.
He done, he done two-legged or four-legged, yeah, whatever hits your face.
Yeah.
I just, I won't be set up, whatever my.
I'm saying that, but he's taking it off.
Or chip on the top of it, you can have it.
That could be too bad. Y'all ready?
Yeah, I had a late contact, made one of our, ladies, some mutant in this temple, and she was questioning why the county didn't have a dog pound. And I told her I would bring that up to the board, and so I brought it up to the board, I'm like, y'all, thinking about that, and we discussed it, mobilized, things on that, and also about recycling, separating, you know, our gardens, so that was something my. Citizen was concerned about, so I told her I'd bring it to the board, so that's why I'm late.
Okay. Well, on the same thing, Lisa. One of the Lexington, they told me that they had a incident where the ambulance come out, and they dropped a patient, and broke two of her toes, and he said, well, at least we didn't drop you off, and he said, it kind of ticked the fan out.
Figure blank?
I, I, I don't know, boss, I don't know how they, I don't dream up all this stuff, get it, get it out.
This something just happened?
You can't make. Last week. And, um, she did, she had to name one of them, but I didn't know, so.
Oh, so more than one?
Well, there's two coming out.
Oh, she had the people, but she named that medic, or he was the driver.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant they dropped two different patients, I missed that.
No, no, it was somebody, one of the Ken folks was down, and couldn't walk, and they was trying to walk, and they was helping her walk to, to the van, and, uh, she failed, she said they couldn't walk very good anyway. But they couldn't get her on a stretcher in the house, because the doors too narrow and stuff, so that's a little better, I thought she made that kind of stretch.
That's what I think, don't you, we have nothing before.
I told her I'd pass it along, so that's just a thing that we need to, when we meet with our animal people, that we need to further discuss, or y'all remember or something, they just, said they kind of made a joke about it, so. I don't know what you're gonna do, they, they get, they're not ten cents difference in all of it, but, I told them I would tell y'all, so y'all. She told me, told me, that, I'm, I was in there to swear in, and they wouldn't have your body, and I said, well, I wouldn't have been either.
We, we, keep it check, okay, we talked before about this building right next door here, our old maintenance building, about taking it down possibly, is that something we wanna discuss anymore?
Mm-hmm.
Soon as we get somebody that can come in and fix it, we're, we tear it down, it don't pull the one right there back with it now.
Probably them saw the wall, like when I did it, same.
They got a bad roof?
No, it's got a new roof, new roof.
It's been five, six years old.
It's leaking. It's a bad roof. Parking lot, I didn't, taking it down. How big is that bit?
Fifty by seventy or something like that, fifty by forty or something.
That's a good size, but. So.
Do we need to get somebody to look at it, to see about what we would need to do structural?
Somebody's got the.
Oil thingy.
The hydraulic lift.
Lift.
Um, that's in the.
Yeah, getting the hydraulic lift out, but I mean. We got the equipment, we can get it now, I don't know what else.
Hey, y'all need some equipment? Yeah.
Speaking of equipment.
Yeah, we need some, oh.
Is yours orange or yellow?
Yep.
Anyway, I just started bringing that up, I kicked it out.
I'm still ready.
Couple of years.
Let's see, get somebody to figure out what we gotta do, what's in there, please, we got anything in?
There's a few, few tools, uh, that bowl beater is still in there, uh, I don't know if Ken has moved the welding machine over.
I was gonna say, why don't we let Ken, is he using the, the maintenance building we built, why don't we let him get everything out of there that needs to be gotten out of there, that's usable, other stuff, let's take it to the landfill, let's clean it out, and then figure out what we can do. We may need somebody to look at it from a structural standpoint, I don't.
Maybe some hammering around fuel tanks, too.
We got the one out front, a long time.
Taking out, this mess, took that one out. And whittling.
So that lift would be another consideration.
The lift, probably be no problems, cause top, I'll do it. Maybe, uh, put that suck down, if you feel anything. It just park, it don't matter, probably sewer, air line, depends what you get at there, but.
There is bathroom, isn't there?
Well, we shouldn't have, have to worry about any of that, we gonna be above ground, we just fill in that hole where that lift's at, and.
Counting so long?
You come in there and put about three inches of asphalt over top of it, be done with.
Actually, I think, now, I don't know for sure, but I think where the city and boys are parking there next to it is our property.
It is.
That's what I'm saying. The main thing, we have a door, we'll have somewhere, so.
Be a few more parking places, is it?
I have six more, maybe, I don't know where it's been.
Do you want me to get Harold Holloway to look at cutting the, that wall, you think he could do it?
If he could at least tell us, you know, from a structural standpoint, are we safe doing it? We don't need somebody else's building.
David wouldn't see you.
Is that his building?
The one next to it.
He might want it taken down too. It probably would be, I don't know, it probably ain't gonna be too bad.
I figure it's gonna be bolted, or cut, just kind of break for your, the block, something like that.
It'd be a big candidate too, if we don't tend to, let's get it, be done with.
Let me get this. They probably supposed to have a year or two tour of the county buildings.
It's something in the law that says you have to, you have to have everything, everything going on. Normally, that's something, you know, the, uh, grand jury asks about.
Yeah. They're on the tour, I know what I was on, you left the tour. Hi, Mr. Kenny, you got anything? Anything else?
Still want to do this, so.
We don't, need to do anything else before we go in now?
Yeah.
That's what I said, do we need to do anything else, like leave resign, Mr. Kenny, or we do that out?
Well, you do it now. Ain't no exception.
And we don't want.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
He's in.
He's in.
He's gonna work that one, you know.
What?
It ain't gonna work that way. Hi, I resign as president of the board, I make that informed motion.
Don't you wanna do elections?
Yeah.
You gotta do elections.
Elections first, decide over the.
You gotta decide over the elections.
Okay, so that would be, Mr. Joe Alexander would be, and I make the motion to Joe Alexander to become the new president of the board if you can, but, all in favor?
Wait a minute, I was the last, the last volunteer for.
We do.
We did, we did.
We just.
You just. You wasn't part of that.
You didn't know about the plan, you were the plan.
Do we have to, me and you, son?
Yeah.
Yeah. Two positions, alright, so it's your turn.
I resign as vice president.
No, we gotta get a new vice president before we resign.
Well. Makes us a charm over, become vice president.
Do that. You just done it to me. Second.
Now, we're gonna put it, skip it, the man's term supposed to be next, I reckon.
Uh-uh, we just done that, cause Jackie didn't want to be president his first year. We're going back to where it's supposed to be, I, I, if I gotta do it, you do it.
Second. All in favor, man, you gonna get, be, you should have been vice president last time, man.
He was vice president first, and I just flip flopped it, I mean, he was president, then vice president, now he's president, I'll be vice president, you be president.
Jackie didn't, Jackie didn't want.
I like it even better. I, I'll be vice president.
No, he's, he's come around again.
Hmm? Well, with my time, next time, if I run as, as vice president, you'll be president, not supposed to.
I absolutely been working.
That's the way it's always been. We just done it different this time because of him.
We just wanted.
He would make president his first year.
Right. And he got all that.
Okay, are y'all getting warm? You gonna president this year, then you gonna vice president or president? You don't think you're.
President, then that means I ain't gonna have a president for four years, I'll do that, I promise.
No.
You have, you're vice president next time.
I'll fire, well, let's get the shit up.
Who's second in the motion?
All in favor?
What do we do?
Just move me as president.
Vice president.
Well, we done done him as president.
Alright. And Kenny resigned.
And so does y'all, I mean, Jack. I need to make a motion that I resign as president, and.
Taking care of it.
We're gonna, we're gonna accept that you have to.
That's what we supposed to done, if y'all.
Alright, and now we need to go.
Now, we need twenty twenty two calories.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's what, I'm just gonna move a little where back.
Okay. You can boot it in the hot seat.
We just get serious.
Alright, y'all make it twenty at the nine o'clock.
We doing it.
We ain't that early.
No, you don't.
I'm over here working.
I don't really about much you do.
Did you do discovery?
No.
We'll make it up to that.
You got that over?
Yeah.
Ain't never been that way, then.
Mr. Michael, would you ask where our business is at? We're just going.
Good to see you, man.
I don't know if I got.
Good to see y'all guys.
Land my bridges.
Congratulations, Jim. Really, I was gonna say, I don't know how much longer the meetings can be, but do y'all have lunch plans afterwards?
I'll eat with you.
You eat with me, alright.
I have a motion on the floor to go into ex session on even though it's a bill, I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?